Today is the fifteenth day of August. And the time is nine o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. We also have with us, starting over here, yourself.
Josh Brown, Ada County Operations.
John Blake, Paramedics.
Bob Carney, Operations.
Ken Seckler, Detective.
Andrea Byrne, Community.
Stephanie Dallin, District.
Sarah Lynn, Clerk's Office.
Timmy Stewart, District's Office.
Richard Beck, Development Services.
Brad Smith, Assessor's Office.
Yamin Taylor, Prosecutor's Office.
Elizabeth Duncan, Communication.
Aye, tea guy.
Katie Reed, Clerk's Office.
Beth Ma, Treasure.
Yeah, well, welcome to the meeting today. All right. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, first item up is a volunteer board to appoint Claire Tardif. Formerly with the Prosecutor's Office, she's now retired. And she is being appointed to the Board of Community Guardians for a term to expire nine thirty twenty-six. Is there any discussion? None? I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Claire Tardif to the Board of Community Guardian. Guardian term expires September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And just congratulate her for staying involved.
Absolutely. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. You've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations to Claire. We'll send her a letter. And wish her well. All right, now getting into new business, we have a number of resolutions that will require us going into a public hearing for each one of them, so. I will open the public hearing on resolution number two eight nine four, which is a resolution to adopt the Ada County budget for all county funds for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Is there any discussion or any comment from anybody?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, we appreciate the Board's consideration of this resolution and the collaborative work between all of the department heads and elected officials and hard work from the Auditor's Office in this budget process this year, so, thank you.
Okay, do you have anything to add? Are we gonna add anything to the budget?
No. That's up to you.
Well, no, we can't. We already adopted the tentative budget. We can't add after that.
Oh, yes.
But we can't subtract.
Yes.
I don't think we're, is there any discussion on subtracting anything? I don't believe so. All right, is there any other discussion on the adoption of resolution number two eight nine four? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two eight nine four and call for a motion.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'll move to adopt resolution number two eight nine four, which as provided by Idaho Code, section thirty-one dash sixteen oh four and sixteen oh five, sets the budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, totaling three hundred and forty-three million, four hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars in appropriations, to include one hundred and fifty-four million, eight hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars in property taxes, and one hundred and eighty-eight million, six hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars in non-property tax revenues. And by the detail attached, reflects the amount allotted to each department and fund of the county.
I second the motion.
Okay. We've got before us the final budget to approve. I think all our departments and all elected have done a great job in getting this budget put together. It should be noted also that the biggest share of our budget is required by state law, state mandates. And unlike other municipal government cities primarily, we are required by law to pay for most of the items that's in our budget. And we do that, and we try to do it as best we can with the least amount of resources possible. And it should also be further noted that that we're using property tax dollars, but our property tax dollars, the average homeowner from the, and this is the homeowner from the in the state, according to the Clerk's Office, in Ada County, the average homeowner will have a decrease in their Ada County portion of the property taxes. So I think that should be noted as well. Anything else? Hearing none. All in favor of the budget? Say aye.
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 Motion carries. Budget for the entirety of the county has been passed. Okay, the next, I'll open the public hearing on resolution two eight nine five. A resolution to adopt the pest extermination district budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt resolution twenty-eight ninety-five, as provided by Idaho Code thirty-one sixteen oh four and sixteen oh five, sets the budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four totaling nine hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars in appropriations, to include seven hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and fourteen thousand in property taxes, and one hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars in non-property tax revenue. And by the detail attached, reflects the amounts allotted to the pest extermination district. Just to note, this is one of those things that we don't note in how it functions until it affects us personally. And we hope it doesn't.
Absolutely. All right, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
All right, is there any further discussion before I close the hearing? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing on resolution number two eight nine five. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. I'll now open the public hearing on resolution number two eight nine six, resolution to adopt the county mosquito abatement district for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Questions or discussion from anyone? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution two eight nine six, which as provided by Idaho Code, section thirty-one dash sixteen oh four and sixteen oh five, sets the budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four, totaling one million, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, two hundred and forty dollars in appropriations, to include one million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars in property taxes, and two hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and seven dollars in non-property tax revenues. And by the detail attached, reflects the amounts allotted to the mosquito abatement district.
I second the motion.
Okay. All right, I'll now close the public hearing on resolution two eight nine six. There's been a motion to adopt the budget. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, now I'll open the public hearing on resolution two eight nine seven, resolution to reserve foregone taxes for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. What this is, is the county and every other taxing district is limited by law to three percent of the property tax budget. We did not use the entire three percent, and so there's some funds left over, and we can reserve those funds, the capability, not the money itself, but the capability for future use if we actually need it. And that's what this foregone tax thing is for. Is there any questions or any discussion on that issue? So what we're doing is we are using the saved property taxes that we could use in the future year. Any discussion?
Well, just that we have no intent to spend those at this moment. But we're simply reserving them.
No, and the law actually limits the use of those funds anyway to a certain percentage of your budget, so it's not as long as you can just step in there and use it. All right, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two eight nine seven and call for a motion.
I move to approve resolution two eight nine seven as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we have a few other resolutions here. I'll open the public hearing on resolution two eight ninety-nine, resolution for procurement of public works construction for replacement of Morris Hill generator automatic transfer switch on open market. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution two eight nine nine and call for the question. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve resolution two eight nine nine as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right. I'll open the public hearing on resolution twenty-nine hundred, resolution for sole source procurement for security systems services for the year, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll close the public hearing on resolution twenty-nine hundred. Call for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution twenty-nine hundred as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution twenty-nine oh one, resolution for sole source procurement of courtroom audiovisual systems for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll close the public hearing on resolution twenty-nine oh one and call for a motion.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty-nine oh one as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. I'll open the public hearing on resolution twenty-nine oh two, resolution for sole source services and maintenance agreement for audiovisual equipment for Ada County facilities and courthouse. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing on resolution twenty-nine oh two. Call for a motion.
I move to approve resolutions twenty-nine oh two as listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Well, we went through eight resolutions and eight public hearings in ten minutes. Not bad. Thank you, including the adoption of our budget, our entire budget. Thank you, everybody. Okay, we'll move on. We have licenses. I'll accept a motion on the licenses.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve and ratify the catering permit signed by Commissioner Beck on August ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, as identified on the agenda. Approve the remaining licenses as listed on the agenda, including two catering permits, two new licenses, and one license transfer, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we have with us the Clerk's Office.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
I've asked Sarah Lynn to come speak to the things that are on the agenda for us today.
Okay.
Good morning.
Sarah, how are you?
Good.
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, so the first item, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is in regards to Idaho Code allows for water and sewer districts to certify delinquencies on the property roll. So what that consists of is they send a request, and then the Board just needs to approve that they're allowed to do that. So we have four sewer districts this year, West Boise, City of Boise, Eagle Sewer, and Star Sewer.
We're supposed to certify that they're following the law.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They did their job, yes.
They did their job. All right, yeah. All right, any questions on that? From the Board?
Do you know how many delinquencies they have? Hundreds, thousands?
H one on the map?
Typically, I think Star Sewer has maybe thirty. Boise City maybe has about thirty. Eagle and Sewer districts tend to have significantly more. I want to say it's Eagle or Sewer, I apologize for not knowing exactly which one, but three hundred, maybe.
Really?
So.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess we need a motion then, don't we?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the twenty-two thousand and twenty-three statements of authority and applications for development assessments and fees for the four taxing districts as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Now you got another one here.
Yes, sir.
Request for extension of budget certification.
Yes, sir.
From Kuna.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so typically school districts are the ones that ask for the extension most frequently. Kuna School District actually sent their request early. They typically wait for attendance numbers to decide what exactly they want to levy. They have an option of an emergency levy if their enrollment numbers are significantly higher, and it allows for them to tax for a little bit extra on that. In the past, I haven't seen them do much of that, but they do like to make sure that they get that request out, and then allows for their extension to base everything off their enrollment.
So how? How long is the extension?
It is seven business days, so typically it will still come in to us, into the Auditor's Office, before it gets to you guys.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Okay, thank you. I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the one request for extension for budget certification as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Claims Journal. The motion on the Claims Journal?
I move to authorize payment of the Claims Journal dated August eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we have personnel actions.
I'll move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and let the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's Office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, we have with us our distinguished assessor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Things are busy over across the parking lot. We have seventy-three appeals to the Board of Tax Appeals, so. Forty-five of those are condos. And, as you know, we have to reappraise twenty percent of our parcels every year, so we've started that, and we'll be reappraising about forty-five thousand parcels.
Now, seventy-three tax bills?
Yeah.
How many of them are condos?
Forty-five.
Same project?
Uh, no.
No, they're different ones. Everyone. All right.
Same owner?
No, I don't think so.
How many do we typically have in a year, you know? You know, Brad?
Brad?
Last year, we had approximately seventy, so it's not more. And the forty-five that we have are an apartment complex, just a single unit, then condo it out, so it's forty-five appeals, so technically, definitely makes it, it's just a lot of paperwork, but that's really just one appeal. So it has kind of increased our number of appeals this year.
Okay. All right. Well, I see you have a number of tax cancellations, which are not really cancellations, rather adjustments, but the code calls them cancellations.
See, the Ada County Highway District is on there.
Did they file a home arrest exemption, did they?
No.
Okay. Ah, okay. Well, we will need a motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes one tax cancellation for two thousand and twenty-one, two tax cancellations for two thousand and twenty-two, thirty-nine tax cancellations for two thousand and twenty-three, one casualty loss, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Well, thank you. All right, we now have our distinguished Treasurers with us today.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, so last week, I attended the Idaho Association of County Treasurers Conference, and it was pretty remarkable. So this is a group that is very collaborative and cohesive. So of the forty-four counties, forty-three Treasurers came, and the forty-fourth county, the chief deputy was there. So it just shows the high level of engagement that you're seeing from the Treasurers, in part because of some of the new legislation that we will be implementing this fall. So it was great, the state treasurer joined us, several representatives from the Idaho State Tax Commission were there. So we talked about ways that we can administer the American property tax relief and ways to serve our taxpayers, so it's a very beneficial conference. That was it.
Did you get any indication from them, about, them, meaning the state, about when we were going to be getting information?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I did, and yes, the due date is November sixth. And that is a very tight turnaround for county Treasurers to then balance the data and produce two hundred thousand unique tax bills. So the second and third weeks of November, we will be pulling some very long nights.
So you don't think it gets the information prior to that?
We could have some data. One of the challenges, as I understand it, is that there's different factors that will be used determining the savings. And to determine that factor, you have to have all of the data for forty-four counties. So they're waiting to see, you know, values, the homestead rolls, the average daily attendance, the surplus. Once they have all of that, they come up with a factor. But again, they can't start doing it county by county. They look at it in the aggregate and then determine the county's portion, so they're well aware of the tight deadline, trying to staff it up, but it will be kind of a hurry up and wait right now.
Does that information come from the Tax Commission?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm glad you had a good conference with forty-three county Treasurers.
Yeah, yeah, and I'll just clarify, that information comes from the State Tax Commission, but it also involves the State Controller, the Department of Education, just coming up with the surplus, the attendance, and all the variables that are factored into that relief. A lot of parties involved.
Well, they like to make it complicated. And it is. All right, well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have Development Services with South Park subdivision.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, pleased to present.
Not the TV show.
Not the TV show. May have been inspired by it, but.
May have been inspired by?
This is the, yeah. If you know the developer, Brian Wilson, yeah, it very well could have been inspired by South Park, but I think it was, I won't go into it. So this is this is the final phase of South Park. It started back in two thousand and four, so it's the southwest Boise, contains twenty-six buildable lots, four common lots. The staff has reviewed this final phase and finds that the applicant has complied with all of the remaining and applicable conditions of approval, and we recommend that you authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plaid.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve application number two zero two one zero zero four one zero S, South Park subdivision number three, and authorize the chair to sign and stamp the final plaid on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have Human Resources. We have Regent's Blue Shield Medical Plan Addenda. Want to tell us anything about that?
Chairman, Commissioners, we are very happy to bring these to you. These are the documents that are needed prior, signature prior to the formal contract. Each of these documents include the blueprints, which we've met with you previously, and Murray Group have gone over every element. This just now captures that blueprint. I am also happy to say that in the last bid for the healthcare TPA process, Regent's committed to no increased admin fees. This is our second year, and we're having no increases on that as well. And again, these are just the document standard in the industry to have you sign ahead of time, and then the full contract will come later. This helps them to be able to lock in those rates with their reinsurers and with their parent companies.
Okay, any questions or discussion from the Board? All right, hearing none, I'll accept a motion.
I move to authorize the chair to sign the Regency Medical Plan Addenda documents as identified on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, we have Approval of the Minutes. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the Minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Next, we have Ratification Authorization for the Application of Adult Mosquito Control Insecticides. These was, these two letters were signed in the event that we do need them. Is Adam, you on the Board? You're on the bridge. You listening, Adam?
Sir.
Tell us where we are on this.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Right now, we're just in the pre-approval process. Those two letters that you signed, and we are ratifying today, just informs the FAA that we perhaps intend to do an aerial application, and that allows them to review the document and then give us authorization to do so. Right now, we're in the stage where we're trying to plan all the logistics, get the products here, get the pilots ready, all that kind of fun stuff that we need to do in preparation for a potential aerial application. And of course, in that case, that we decide we would like to move forward, we would then present the Board with some geography and an approval for you to give us before we move forward.
All right, so these are like pre approvals, so that the flight standards and the vector of disease control understand that we may or may not be moving forward with an aerial application. Okay, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, yes, sir, that does just allow the pilot to kind of get everything ready for us, and so when we decide to go, then it'll be a quick process.
Okay. All right, is there any questions from the Board? All right, I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve and ratify the authorization for application of adult mosquito control insecticides signed by Commissioner Beck on August ninth, as identified on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, now we have Expo Idaho, an interim event, and four commercial exhibitor agreements for the fair. Any discussion or questions? Sounds like an interesting event, bacon and beer. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the one interim event agreement and four commercial exhibitor agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. We now have Parks and Waterways. We have two agreements for Park, Barber Park Education and Event Center. One's for the thirteenth of January twenty-four, the other one's for the sixteenth of December twenty-three. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the two Barber Park Education and Event Center agreements as listed on the agenda, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Okay, you've heard the motion, uh, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, alright, now we have forty-one agreements, and these are, um, mostly renewal agreements that's required, uh, because our, the all agreements that we have ends on the fiscal year, and these agreements will replace those. Uh, we've had them for, uh, about a week to look at them, is there any questions from the Board?
Mr. Chair, see we got our, uh, our, uh, Fleet, um, software contract on here, maybe your Fleet Manager can talk about that, this new development here?
I'm very excited about getting that going, um, implementation of it, getting it all fired up, getting all the vehicles in there, um, it's really going to help track them, maintain them, and also, uh, get a good vehicle usage report, so I can see what vehicles are being used where, um, really looking forward to all of that.
Yes, so are we. Yes, yes, yeah, thank you, thank you, that's, uh, we've, we've been working on that a long time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There was a car wash agreement, uh, were you working on that, or is that for the sheriff's side?
I believe that's for the sheriff's side, um, that Holman, uh, program though, they do have contracts with car washing as well, so. That would be a plus for me.
Alright, yeah, that's, that's what, okay, any other questions? There's a lot of, uh, a lot of car, a lot of, uh, contracts, and that's just the beginning of our contract. This is something we do every year, because, uh, the law, uh, only allows us to, uh, enter into a contract one year at a time, and so all of our contracts expire at the end of September, and so we're, uh, getting a jump on it. Alright, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion on forty-one contracts.
I'll, um, move to approve the forty-one agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, next up, we have, uh, Indigent Services, the weekly indigent items. I'll accept a motion.
I move to accept the recommendations of the Indigent Services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and authorize the Chair to sign the documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that. Okay, you've heard the motion, all in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Is there anything else needs to be brought before the Board today? At this open business meeting? Okay, hearing none, we'll be adjourned, thank you.